It's blinking. Why? That's it, right? Okay, then it must be good to go. Let's see, do you see?
Am I going through?
Oh, I see, yeah, there's Lynn. Alright.
Hey, we're done, how are you?
Okay, how are you Brian?
Very good.
Is that what you wanted up?
Yeah.
Is that what you wanted up?
Hey, it is my phone number. Okay, I'm here, I'm here. And we have it, um, it looks like it's live, but it just is scrolling and scrolling. But it says, "Stream Health," and it looks pretty healthy. This video, it's green, but it says, "This video is unavailable." Now, the camera is on. And, and the camera, the little green light is blinking, right? On that, that little thing, okay? Does it say private or public? What do you see? Priv- it says public. Okay. Hit the refresh button. Okay, got it, we're doing it. And, um... It's blinking. It's, hey, we're, we're in! You're amazing. Okay, we're good. Okay. Check your phone, Kevin. It says it's green, and it says, "Stream Health is good." It's green, and it's live. And you did the code on the website, Kevin?
Not yet.
He's not yet, I think maybe I have to send that to him. Is that the YouTube thing, Line Dashboard? Okay, I'll send that to him. But I think we're good. Yeah, maybe at some point, check it later. And, um... Oh, I'll do that right now, I'll do that right now. Thanks. Okay, I'll send you the embed code.
I can grab it.
Oh. I sound like I know what I'm talking about, right?
I found it again. I found it. I didn't know it was on.
It's green.
We're good.
Okay, I'm gonna let him know. George can't see it. Oh, here we go. Are you doing things for me? Are you leaving Wednesday? How about you? You don't have to leave, I've taken a whole week off. People are... Mom's got her, mom's got the... I like that you wore teal.
You left your way for two hours there. Yeah, here you go. Okay.
This is the number thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred, Board of Education. Please rise to the platform, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Do you hear the roll call, please?
Mr. Ferris?
Present.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Barlet? Mr. Holmwood?
Here.
Mr. Friesy? Mr. Freecy?
Here. Okay, first item on our agenda today is the election of a Vice President. For those who are not aware, David Shinnard resigned his former seat and is also our Vice President after the last meeting due to employment. We will miss him terribly. He's the fourth member who has since been gone. We need to replace him with a new Vice President. So, at this point, um, I will entertain nominations for Vice President.
Nominate Mr. Holmwood.
And a nomination of Jacob Holmwood.
Second.
By Mr. Freecy, seconded by Mr. Ferris. Any other nominations? Okay, at this point, I will find that nominations are closed, and we'll take a roll call on naming Mr. Holmwood.
Mr. Freecy?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmwood?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Congratulations, Jacob, you're our new Vice President. We're gonna do an open office, just because I can argue you, so I'll do the hat. So, please rise, stand, and raise your writing office. I, Jacob Holmwood, do solemnly swear...
I, Jacob Holmwood, do solemnly swear...
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Vice President of the Board of Education. And I will faithfully...
I will faithfully discharge the office of Vice President...
Board of Education. Of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred.
Of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States...
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
The laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability. I further swear that...
I further swear that...
I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school. I shall respect taxpayer interests...
I shall respect taxpayer interests...
By serving as a faithful protector...
By serving as a faithful protector...
Of the school district assets...
Of the school district assets.
I shall encourage and respect...
I shall encourage and respect...
The free expression of opinion...
Free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members...
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek adhering before the Board...
And others who seek adhering before the Board.
While respecting the privacy of students...
While respecting the privacy of students.
And employees.
And employees.
I shall recognize...
I shall recognize...
That a board member...
That a board member...
Has no legal authority as an individual...
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions...
And that decisions.
Can only be made by a majority vote.
Can only be made by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And...
And...
I shall abide...
I shall abide...
By majority decisions of the Board...
By majority decisions of the Board.
While retaining the right to seek changes...
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions...
In such decisions.
Through ethical...
Through ethical...
And constructive change. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, pardon that, to you, that's...
Yeah? Very good. Okay, so then we'll, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. There is a personnel addendum, a short one. Does any board member wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Okay, then if you take a moment, review it. And when anyone's ready, there is a suggested motion at the bottom of the agenda.
Can we, can we pull number eight?
Eight? Two twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one makes a question.
Okay. Uh, any other orders, if anybody wishes to have removed the poll. If not, there is a motion on page one as amended without too much.
Move to waive the reading out and approve the consent agenda, including the personnel addendum, but excluding section two point eight as per the board agenda.
The motion by Mr. Freecy, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded in by Mr. Holmwood, roll call, please.
Mr. Freecy?
Yes.
Mr. Holmwood?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, um, future questions about the way...
Yeah, is, is it just, are we just moving through the list?
Yeah, Woodstock already has a separate agreement for his board. This is for North, and he looked at it for a year or so, he tried to do it by himself, and he just found that it's all in, giving his sponsorship to get the signage set up. Did have more success with somebody. Reassembled it in the contract, and we think it's a decent agreement.
It doesn't make sense to be like, one...
It doesn't, and it, Woodstock's got a bigger deal right now than North a little bit. Also, North tabled New York. And you got it, it's a separate agreement.
All right, any other questions on item two point eight? We have motion regarding...
Move to approve the Woodstock North High School order of marking improvement as permitted.
Second.
By Mr. Freecy, seconded by Mr. Holmwood. Roll call, please.
Mr. Freecy?
Yes.
Mr. Holmwood?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, right, next item on our agenda then is our recognition.
All right, tonight, we have the great honor of recognizing Kylie Agnew. Twice, she's walked over countless cross-country meet champion. She went downstate, went all the way to Woodstock section in her car. She placed tenth at state, earning All-State honor. She is a five-time All-State athlete, three times across country, twice in track. Absolutely amazing career, it's not done yet, we've got a little more to expect. It's a well-deserved honor, we ask you to honor Kylie.
There's a suggested motion on page fifty of your materials or in board book.
Whereas the Board of Education of Woodstock, who is the unit school District Two Hundred, wishes to recognize the capabilities of these individuals, this individual. Whereas District Two Hundred has benefited as a result of these accomplishments. Now, therefore, be resolved, the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred hereby bestows special recognition and certificate of achievement on behalf of the citizens of the district.
Second, motion by Mr. Ferris, seconded by Mr. Freecy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Freecy?
Yes.
Mr. Holmwood?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Please join me congratulating, tenth at state, all-state, for the fifth time, Kylie Agnew. Congratulations again, thank you, Kylie. Okay, um, that is all of our recognition. Um, we next move into communications, which is a chance for, a good time for people to step out if they don't wish to, uh, stay for the rest of the meeting. Aren't there any people here, it looks like one is left at once, please, so we'll move into communications then. Uh, first up would be public comments. Do any members of the public wish to address the board at this time? No one signed up, so... Okay. Uh, staff comments, are there any comments for staff? Okay, board comments, any comments in the board? And then remember, you've got your packets to go to the trip lines you can. Any other board comments?
Just have to license me and help you with most of the state, and have to take, uh, Woodstock work, you're a very impressive, um, they did an awesome job. I enjoyed being in this building, it's gonna be able to see some of that stuff, more like it than anything.
It was a great performance, definitely.
Any other board comments? Okay, who will be the superhead?
Well, pardon, I refer to music, the magicals perform, the Woodstock non-magicals perform summer seven, eight? It's a Friday, Saturday, that we, at the Malick College Book, always great show, classic magical performance. I want to thank, believe it or not, here Dr. Shinnard for his service to the board. We'll miss him, and appreciate the time that he gives each minute of the community. Good Thanksgiving next week, so we'll have school on Monday, Tuesday, we'll be off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for the holiday. Last week, be a great turnout for our dual-length parent night again, which will be at Big Side in Prairie Wood. Two great events to engage our families and all of us, and children of the nation. Sure an article with you, as you see today, in the local newspaper. It highlights the work, three of our buildings did their gates of community. The message, Tricia Bethany and Carrie Owen, the staff members of the community apartment building, to help build relationships, and to let everyone know that where they're gonna gather to support each other, and make sure that they're able to see that whole school connection come to life. And that's such an integral part for us, too, in our family. Really proud of the work of our buildings on that. And that's our first vote, please.
Then the next item on our agenda is our monitoring, monitoring report table.
All right, so we went over our scores last time, and this week, we were gonna compare ourselves both locally, the large, the other largest districts in the county, and then took some comparison data with other districts like that around the state. Just to see, we focused on reading, that's our hope, that's our goal to do. So, we were on the first slide, we've got, in the county, third grade part reading, we can see, we can see, and we're right about, I mean, in the middle of the class, six districts, and you know, real close, being a little higher than us there, but we're either school below, everybody else, third grade reading. We go sixth grade reading, um, again, we're second to count, we was low, low on the key, and then a little higher than the rest of the larger district in the county. Just to give you a little comparison of how we're doing, we talked about how we're doing ourselves, or against the state average, or improving in the world, but this shows you how we're doing now regionally. So then, we wanted to go around the state, because demographics indicate success in test, look different data points, so we chose five other districts around the state that, that looks similar to us. We try to state, you know, still a little bit small there, um, the rest of them are, are still no size of us, similar demographics, we've been reading probably the most similar unit districts we could find statewide. And when we look at those, um, you look and see that the third grade part, we were tied to the highest among those schools look like us in state, you can see how they, they go after that. And the sixth grade part, we are, but still not, we've been reading the highest among those comparisons we use in state. Once again, six unit districts that, that look like us demographically, generally, to give us that, that, throughout the width of a comparison statewide, and give you another footnote. Part about how we're doing against ourselves, or against the state average, now just a couple pieces, you can see how we're doing regionally and then statewide compared to, like, district, we look at demographics.
Any questions?
Kind of general information, to kind of put up a big, a big piece of the puzzle in there on achievement and how to, kind of measure how we're doing.
That's it? That's it? Any other questions or comments? Can we go back a couple slides, please? So are we able, I mean, are we able to identify anything that we're doing differently than they might be doing at home, that might explain why we're over the world where they aren't?
What about that? Yeah, I want to, I think, I could do a demographic comparison of all of the districts, which I mean, we're talking about, you know, when you look at the demographics, if you talk about student achievement, obviously, the state can tell you that pretty much lunch, if you get an indicator, partner, if you look at national data, and we're about forty percent, and they're probably about twelve percent, but there are differences. You know, on experience, it's a little bit, you know, but that's what you, you second set of data, if you look at demographics, the difference that look like us.
I mean, well, for example, like this Crystal, Crystal A forty-seven and Kerry aren't gonna have those types of, aren't gonna have those types of.
Crystal A forty-seven is actually a little more diverse economically than the other that's there. I could pull up quick if you want.
No, I'm just trying to see if we, when we look at it, what does it mean?
Well, I mean, if you look at it, regionally, we're very competitive, we're below long league scorers, but outside of that, in third grade, we're even, or just a tick below everyone around us. I think that's a good first step of the conversation, because I think, you know, that's the first part of it, is you look at what's around us, who's around us, what communities surround us, how are we doing? You know, J is a really good district, I'm not gonna integrate it, they're doing a good job, which also look at, you know, demographic also, which, you know, statistically statewide off the, but outside of that, if you look at sixth grade, um... Again, I only take, I take the six largest districts in the county, because I think when you start getting smaller than that, you talk about hundred kids, the variance there is probably a little bit greater, um, so the larger group, you probably score a mallet. I would say, is our goal to be hired on them?
For sure.
Absolutely, that's the matter of course, that, um, they do a good job, so, you know, I don't think I'm doing wrong with that.
I'm not suggesting anybody is satisfied.
Oh, gotcha. We're always trying to better their careers. Yeah. Right, you know, compare your team, economically the first also. I can push them up, and, and as a result, they're comparable. And when we look at, you know, the next slide, that's where we turn with districts statewide that look more like demographics. Again, it's not to say that our only goal is to be, to hire people, look at us demographics, our goal is to have highest scores we can have. I think that the state scores kind of went along with that too, that, you know, the growth scores, um, you know, everything they've done for good, that's a basis, probably it's really, you know, looking at apples to apples. Or if you look at, you know, a little blank picture, their performance. And like, perhaps, like, we say, the schools that demographically are similar to us, it's pretty hard for reading, you know, form, both of them will. Yeah, I could find five that were higher than us too, and that's the goal, and I think, you know, we tried to look, that's what we did last couple years, look regionally, because I think the form is to know people around us and where we're comparing, and then look statewide, people that demographically, uh, who look similar to us.
How does, uh, Harris engagement grow like with our sports? I mean, it's probably difficult, West Virginia's, or, or areas of, to...
You know, I, if I, if I look at... I think the more engaged we can have students in their education with the children, the better chance we have of reaching both parent and child. We have done enough, and I couldn't give you an absolute, an absolute answer on that, but I think when we're looking to engage our families, there's a couple reasons, right? Put one of them in, absolutely, to make sure that they understand what we're doing and why it's important. I think one thing that the state data brought up this year, we're really attentive, is that for some, we have some subgroups, if, maybe North, right, where the attendance could be an issue, and I think that's where we're really focused on family engagement, we have to have those conversations with young people. We have our scores, so these, we went over last week, last month, about the growth that we had, really tells us that we have kids here, and they're engaged with us, and they're active, you know, we've got a good chance to have success. And where we're not often, is one of the factors, that people don't have here now for some reason, you know, there's a lag in getting people. I think we're gonna talk about that later in the year too, how we continue to improve that, but, you know, we think for a number of reasons, too, parent engagement is, is important.
Well, it looked like, maybe I would misremember it, but it looked like, going up again across the board, that we were, on all those, on all those parts, we're at forty, including third grade.
Yeah, pretty close.
Forty, 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 that is the percent of the students, is that correct?
That's the percentage of kids.
So, we are pretty much across the board at forty, or fifteen, at least in these two grades.
Yeah.
In reading.
Yeah.
At forty percent of our students are at our EAX expectations.
Yeah, yeah, just sort of clear, the park expectations are higher than grade level. But I think sometimes that's a missed number, to say, oh, you're reading at grade level. When we look at, math is how most people in the state measure grade level reading. You have to be at seventy percent on math to get a passing score on the park. So, um, but yeah, that's, that's the expectation state is set for park, and we have found a percent of our kid reading, which is again, one of the other reasons why we don't feel like we're gonna be complacent, it's due to, because where it was not good, but it's nowhere near where we want to be. You know, I think, with our staff, we've come a long way, and you know, we've cut off all the quote we had in the last four years apart, but we still have a long way to go in addition to that, that we need to draw on our kids.
Anybody have any additional questions or comments, thoughts on the part two?
Or next time, or every time there's something else you wanna see, just tell me, you know, we can, we can change it up and do, um, whatever we're gonna see.
Any else, anybody else? Okay. Thank you for the update. We have no unfinished business, so we'll now move into our new business. First business, if I have a new business today, is approval of snow removal, snow removal and fall new bid.
And we recommend the awarding of the lowest bidder to the Langton group, and they would do the salty and the snow removal, we sent carried with Greenwood, Woodstock more than Woodstock High School. And we're estimating that in a typical winter, that would cost about ninety thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Of course, it fluctuates based on actual snow and ice and, uh, you know, the weather, but right now, we believe that it should come in close to that figure, and, um, to bid can be renewed for a second and third year, if we, if we, if we do a good job and want to. Any questions?
The remaining buildings we go to, that's the number.
A little larger ones, the ones that are bit out. We'd work, Ken's worked with them before, I don't feel like the company responded here.
Did we need, did we use that last year?
That's how many, three years? We used them the last three years, then there was one year that we did, and we used them for like, two years prior to that, so altogether, so that made it, we used them for about five years. The year we didn't, we're the kind of, because sometimes these companies bit out, wanting to get the work, then bidding it, be able to do it, just everything. So I don't know, it was, what, four years ago maybe that we?
Yeah.
We were in a bid with somebody else, and we just, you know, equipment couldn't be here, you know, which is great, except when the snow comes, so then you're bombing, get the seals started, and it was fantastic. They've done, I think, Ken worked with them, of course, the rest of them, they've done all the work.
Yeah.
Local company.
The locals, during snowstorms, I'm communicating with them all night long, so they're very good at communication, they're just very good company.
I would say there was time to, I mean, I'm kinda thinking, I'm back around there this morning, and there's a spy called Ken about, you know, they're on it, and I appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, there is a suggested motion on page two before your material or board book.
Move to award the bid for snow removal and salty from the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year to the Langton group.
Second, motion by Mr. Hobo, seconded by Mr. Freese, roll call please.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Mr. Freese?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Vasselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Next item then is our determination of the two thousand eighteen tax law.
We start on, uh, this page fifty-seven, and that is the levy timeline, so as they mean, we are determining the levy, and we have twenty days prior to the final adoption to do that, so we're going to read that timeline. And then at the next four months of December eleventh, or noon, we'll actually approve the levy, and then I have until the last Tuesday of December, which happens for Christmas this year, um, to file a economic report, but I will, I will look at that. The next page is estimated E A, E A B, uh, information that we get from the supervisor of assessment, assessment office. So he, uh, right now is projecting that we would have, uh, eight hundred and forty-four million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars of E A B for next, um, twenty eighteen year, and that also includes, uh, just under five point three million dollars of new property or wealth. The next page, however, is a comparison of the preliminary E A B that we get in the fall compared to the final E A B that we get in the spring, because all of this is changing, there's not more review action, and township assessors making changes and so on. So what I did is an eight-year comparison to show, uh, estimated to actual, and what I just, you know, what the average then shows is that the assessments actually go down by point nine eight five percent, and the growth usually goes up about two point seven percent. So I'm then applying those averages to numbers that we were given, so eight hundred and forty-one million that I just talked about, or eight hundred and forty-nine million that I just talked about, and, um, once you apply those averages, we're going to use eight hundred and forty-one million, three, oh, six, six, sixteen, and I didn't bring my glasses in, or to see. So that will be the basis for all of the calculations that we do going forward. The next page just shows, uh, a chart form that of our E A B for the last several years versus our tax rate for the last several years. So you can see that back in two thousand and eight, our E A B was at the most upper end, it was at one point one two eight billion, and then in twenty fourteen, it dropped significantly over those years to seven hundred and nineteen point four million. However, it started going upwards through twenty fifteen, and now we're estimating that twenty eighteen will have a hundred and eighty-fourty-one point three million. And you can also see the tax rates, as the E A B, um, declined, the tax rate went up. So, and that's due, you know, we have a true D property base, someone's trying to fight the same amount of money, so the rate has to go up, because you definitely have to save a lot of money or a little more. So beginning in twenty fifteen, and then as the E A B began to rise, the tax rate began to fall, and, um, it actually decreased, it decreased a dollar sixteen from its highest point in twenty fourteen compared to the twenty seventeen tax rate, and it's anticipated that the district's tax rate for twenty eighteen will decline an additional thirty-two cents and will be six point seven three eight four. So once the twenty eighteen levy is finalized in the spring, uh, it's estimated that the tax rate will decline a dollar forty-eight from its highest point, or eighteen percent, and the overall tax rate between twenty, uh, twenty thirteen and, yeah, no, twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen. Any questions on that?
Yeah, when you talk about, you talked about the reassessed E A B going down, that is the actual assessed value of all properties combined, right?
Yes.
And the growth E A B would be attributable to growth in the number of units?
Uh, it would be attributable to new property coming on the tax roll, so, for instance, the new startups that just went in, uh, by far, let's say, that would be new property that's now on the tax roll.
So while the total amount of money that's per, per unit is dropping, we're getting more units towards it.
Per unit?
Per, per household, whatever you wanna call it, per, um, property, you're getting more property, but at a, in a lower amount per property, right?
No, I mean, everybody's property changes different, in the summer going up, summer going down, so it's staying the same, so it's just taking all of the property and two hundred values and taking this X amount, and off that amount, five point three million or, as another, they determine this new property that's brand new to the tax roll that we're not seeing before.
Yes. So the, the rate that dictates property tax, that is rate times, any of your individual property, that's what's decreasing percent over the last five years projected, with the number then of being used projected.
So the next page, which is page sixty-one, just hope that's a little more complicated. So it's explaining that last year, so the box in the far left, the twenty seventeen levy extension, and that's the money we received from our levy last year, we received fifty-six million, six eighty-nine, eight twenty-four, and our tax rate was seven oh five, if I can, if you're looking there. This year, twenty eighteen levy, we're eligible to receive sixty million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, based on how the, how the tax suspension limitation law works. So we basically can get two point one percent inclusion of C P I on our tax cap, on our CAP funds, and then when you get the money, we need to make our obligations. So we could get sixty million, twenty-seven, seventy-nine, so four point one, almost million dollars more than we got last year. However, we don't plan to do that, and we're gonna hold the levy flat, we got this year, to wanna keep the tax rate down. But what we are looking at doing is, is taking advantage of the two point one percent C P I, these are operating our, our CAP funds, and then abating and lowering the bond interest that we're using reserves out of the head fund to make the cap payment. We did that last year, last year we abated one point seven four million dollars from the bond, fund to make the payment, and this year we're looking at doing more, so we're gonna have four point, just over four point one million. And with doing that, we're still, if you look at the total levy, we're still gonna have fifty-six point six eight nine million, but the tax rate will go down, they're almost thirty-two cents, to six point seven three eight four, and that's because our E A B is going up. So we talked about that, if our E A B goes up, the tax rate goes down, we're not asking for any more money than last year, because the E A Bs went up, the rate will go down. So the next two pages is just the whole formula laid out step by step by step, we're not gonna go over that, um, but it is there to understand that. And then, page, uh, let's see, page sixty-three, there's just two things that I wanna point out on that page, and that is, I talked about the baiting and the bonding interest fund, the four point one million, so in yellow, I highlighted, I guess it's printed on the earth, and sideways on your screen, but the twenty fourteen bond, if you look at the bottom, that payment is supposed to be five million, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We're going to abate the new reserves, four million, so now we're only gonna levy nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for that bond, so that's what's the money, and then at the next meeting, there'll be a revolution that you have to approve, it has to be filed with the county clerk, so that county clerk will lower the amount of taxes they got for that bond. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out is... And then the other thing I just wanted to point out is, and I would say this ever here, you know, we're, we're asking for fifty-six point six eight nine million, but we don't get that much, because people don't always pay all their bills, or they don't lend things, or whatever. So we usually get about ninety-nine and a half percent of what we ask for. So the far column on the right shows the reduction, so starting at fifty-six point seven million, we'll get fifty-six point four. And the next page just shows the impact on homeowner, or on a two hundred thousand dollar home. And so with our rate going down, uh, that homeowner should see a reduction in their taxes of one hundred and ninety-two dollars, or about four and a half percent, or two hundred thousand dollars. And then the next page is the actual comparison between last year's extension and this year's levy. This is the legal comparison that we have to make, this is what the resolution is, and this is what we have to compare. So I tried to put them in colors so you know what numbers you're looking at. So under, um, subtotal line, we're comparing last year's extension to forty-eight point three million, and this year's fifty-nine point six eight, and that's a four point eight five percent increase. But then you look at our debt service, and we're comparing eight point three million to six million, so it's a twenty-eight percent decrease. And then in total, it's zero, exactly, for last year. If there's not any question, then there's a resolution that needs to be approved. And then like I said, next, next four meetings, we'll have a little exact same presentation. And we'll also have a second item to do a little wake-up for last year.
Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the tax law? If not, there is a suggested motion on page fifty-six of the materials or in order.
Move to determine the 2018 tax levies, waive the reading of and approve the resolution of operating the estimated aggregate levy for the year 2018.
Motion by Mr. Friesey, do you have a second?
Second.
Jerry?
Yep.
Seconded by Mr. Masali. Roll call please.
Mr. Friesey?
Yes.
Mr. Masali?
Yes.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
All right. Looking forward to that being the resolution the next time out. All right, so then we're on to our policy revisions.
Okay, tonight we have seven policies up for first reading, six of them are updates, and one is a new policy. These are all either recommendations for improvement through administration or press, or, uh, they're the outcomes of legislation. Go through, I'll do the, uh, updates of the existing policies first. Six sixty curriculum content, that adds a line in the policy that requires at least one unit of personal instruction to be completed before a student completes fifth grade. Uh, six one thirty is there, uh, it's updated due to the new policy, six one thirty-five, which I'll get into in a second. Uh, there's added cross-references and some wording that's reflected in six one thirty-five, the new policy. Uh, six two forty, and is a, just a swap-out of one terminology, a free-to-use launch for fee waiver in that policy. And six two fifty, and seven thirty are just approvals based on language. Uh, in community resource, six two fifty, there's an addition of one, another type of volunteer that can be used. And in the inter-district transfer, there's a definition of the transfer, and kind of cleaning up of how that process works. Uh, seven fifty, the last updated policy, is also, uh, due to the new policy, six one thirty-five, and there's language there, and then cross-reference to the new policy. The new policy, six one thirty-five, uh, is in action out of Public Act one hundred dash four two one, which required all districts to have an accelerated placement program. So this policy was created for us by trust, and basically walks through the three types of acceleration that needs, need to be provided, uh, for individual subject for a student, uh, grade level acceleration for a student, or early entrance into kindergarten. It also provides that the policy has to have a fair and equitable decision-making process with multiple stakeholders, it must have a set notification and communication process, and there must be an incentive process. Those are the seven policies for first reading.
With respect to the policies, the changes in the accelerated placement program, is this, is this going to involve adding new, maybe we're not already doing? We put a policy in place, but it may or may not be used to, we're doing without the necessity of a policy. And we have to pass the law, I believe.
Yeah, but your question, your question becomes a practice of a change. Which we allow for, you know, which we have a, you call, give a practice of, I don't know, do anything in there, whatever, what the change of the form we call it.
Anybody have any question, any other questions? Or comments? Not, there is a suggested motion on page sixty-six, and, sorry, sorry, page sixty-eight, under materials or report.
Move to approve the recommended revisions to policy six sixty, six one thirty, six two forty, six two fifty, seven thirty, and seven fifty, and the new policy, six one thirty-five, adoption for first reading.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Friesey, seconded by Mr. Holland. Sorry, motion by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Friesey, thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Friesey?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Masali?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our new business. Uh, next item on our agenda is committee reports, have any committees met since the last four meetings, or was it recorded this time? Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is our closed session, however, I've been informed today that we are not going to be conducting a closed session today.
Now, however, we'd like to go to discussion.
But on, we're going to move on to the, um, district discussion, I want to meet new.
We don't have an agreement, uh, for the big vote today. I do have, on advice account, we want to, before we discuss the option of the, the joint review board meeting, a vote of present as opposed to a negative vote, we think it may accomplish, uh, just great cooperation while ensuring the, some of the opportunities that we have to be there still, if the board wanted to consider that. So that's on Monday, and we've put it out there for discussion at the, at the election.
The concern that I expressed to Mike regarding, uh, the present vote, is that there are two ways to read, well, a couple ways, but if you simply abstain, under some rules, an abstention constitutes a yes vote. Under some rules, an abstention constitutes a acquiescence in the majority decision. So if the majority were to vote no, and you abstain, it's acquiescence as, as a no. Uh, if the majority votes yes, and you abstain, it's acquiescence as a yes vote. Um, in other words, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't have the effect of simply not having any effect whatsoever. And a present vote could be looked at as an abstention vote. And that was my concern about simply going and not voting, there has been a vote by the board in direction. If the board up would want to change that, we'd entertain a motion to do that today. Um, but we had a vote in direction going forward at our last board meeting. If the board wants to change it, this is the opportunity to do so. So that was the...
Yeah, council thought with that, spread some more, to say, to abstain, they're trying to have a agreement done, while keeping people in the country. I'd like to, that first up, one follow-up question, that council, I don't think that's going to be a session.
Yeah.
I don't think we have enough information to get down to. In the state that I'm in, you may, you may not be able to. I don't think that's going to be a session, we don't think that's going to be a term.
So at this point, the direction of the board is that, that the board opposed the district, and directed its representative to so vote. There's not a motion to change that, and that's the direction we will follow. Is there any further discussion on this, or is there a motion? Once? Twice? Three times? I declare a vote to die for live in motion? Okay. Hold on. Second. It's all the business we have today. Um, entertain a motion of view?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Friesey, seconded by Mr. Holland, roll call please.
Mr. Friesey?
Yes.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Masali?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.